Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Exter Planning Board meeting of October 10, 2019, and start with introductions. My far right, your left. Peter Steckler is with us this evening, and he is an alternate, but he'll be acting. Oh, minutes we've got to look at. Next is Jen Martell. She also is an alternate, but will be acting this evening. Selectmen's representative Nico Apostakis is our Selectmen Ward's representative, which I said once.
And you'll be acting.
He will be serving in that role. Pete Cameron is our clerk. I'm Langdon Plummer, Chair of the Board. And to my left, your right, is a regular member, Aaron Brown. Pete, by the way, is a regular member. Because he's clerk, he's got to be a regular member. Okay. So we'll start off with minutes of September 12 meeting, which we received in our packet. So open any comments?
The first one I saw was the date.
The date?
The 26th, is that correct?
I have the 26th. Do you have the 12th in your packet, too?
I just have the 26th.
I have the 26th.
Okay. That's what I'm talking about.
Okay, yeah.
26th, okay.
I'm sorry, I thought I heard 12th.
That's what I did, too. Just wanted to check.
Okay. Breathe, breathe. That was our last.
Yeah.
You're straight here from.
So, Mr. Chair. Yes. I wasn't clear at the last meeting who was, if any of the alternates were voting members. Because there were six regular members, is that correct?
Which I guess.
Is that enough? Do you need a seventh?
Should have a seventh.
One of you.
I was.
Jen was voting.
Yeah, because it, online.
Remember how Jen stepped in?
In 26, it says that Gwen and I both abstained from that vote, and I didn't think I was acting. Do you need to be an acting member to approve minutes? Or voting member, I should say. Probably hadn't appointed anyone yet, because it was prior to any applications. Usually that's when we appoint. An alternate vote, so. Do you remember abstaining?
You know, you're right about that, but I thought you did abstain, though. For some reason, I remember you.
Well, I wasn't there at that meeting, so I don't think it would be appropriate to vote, but I also didn't think I was a voting member at that.
No, you weren't. That's correct, but for some reason, I remember you abstaining. Which may have to spend from, you know, habit of, I wasn't there.
He's recorded as being planning board members president. I'd just strike Gwen English and Pete Steckler, we're just in, period after abstentions.
All right.
He's recorded as being an alternate. Peter, he's recorded as being an alternate, not a member. Pete Steckler, alternate, on line eight.
Yes.
Yeah, that's always.
Yeah. Yeah, so I would say get rid of it, right?
Yeah.
Can't abstain if you're not eligible to vote. I think that's what Pete is saying. I think he's right.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Okay.
One abstention, then, would it be? Because it was Gwen?
One abstention, yes.
But one abstention, period, and then you can strike. I mean, we don't need to know who won that one.
Other comments?
This is on page four, excuse me. Now, maybe her husband stepped in.
No, it was Ms. Suter. It should read Ms. Suter.
All Homer, excuse me, all homeowners have sump pumps for drainage on tamarind and a cross.
Tamarind, period?
Yeah, I don't know what and a cross.
Yeah, I don't either, so.
Tamarind, period.
And then, last but not least. We had number eight. PB Representatives' report on other committee activity. There were none. There weren't any reports, were there?
No, I don't think so.
So, in the past, have we just, even though there's been nothing, we've left it as a, as an item?
I believe so.
Okay, that's it.
Just getting back to that one, the one you just said, Peter, and a cross.
Yeah.
Would it be worth, this was a non-binding design review, but it could have been tamarind and cullen? I mean, because there's two roads back there? But I don't know. Want to just check the tape on that, and if it's cullen, put it in? If it's not, keep it out?
Yeah. I mean, you could say and a cross on cullen way.
Yeah, but I don't know if that was said.
If not, in fact, it's accurate.
Yeah, I don't know if it was said.
I don't know the geography.
We'll check on that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Oh, by the way, Robin Tanner's joined us this evening. You're number seven, so you'll be acting tonight.
So, line 63.
Line 63.
At the end, I think it should be corrected to say that Jim Gove is a certified wetland and soil scientist, not a wetlands soil scientist.
Ah. Line 53?
63.
63, excuse me. Add the word and, huh?
Delete the apostrophe s?
Yeah. And then, lines 67, 68, where it says a big fill pile supports the field was manipulated. I'm not sure what that, what that means exactly.
That supports the field, maybe?
Yeah, that's, what are you saying? I remember that. He was saying that the existence of the big fill pile supports that the field was manipulated. Because he was saying it had been manipulated in the past, and the big pile kind of supports that fact. Or not fact, that, you know. Whatever you want to call it, theory.
Okay, so I think that clarification's helpful. And then, line 92, I think, where it says, "And a buffer with be provided." It should be "will be provided."
You have homes on tamarind and a buffer will be provided?
See that? If that's it, I'll move their adoption.
Okay, as noted, with your corrections, as noted?
I'll second.
Move and second it? So those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. They stand approved, as noted. Next business this evening, a request by Gateway at Exter LLC for a design review of a proposed proposal to consolidate and re-subdivide tax map parcels 47-6, 47-7, situated on Epping Road into three lots, and a proposed proposal to construct a mixed-use development on the two newly created parcels with frontage on Epping Road. The proposed development would include three multifamily residential buildings consisting of 224 units, and 40,000 square foot mixed-use building and associated site improvements. The subject properties are located in C3 Epping Road Highway Commercial Zoning District in his case number 19-12. Public hearing on a proposed amendment to section 7.4 points, oh, that's, excuse me, that's our next business. So, who do we have this evening to represent?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. For the record, my name is Jim Petropolis. I'm a civil engineer with the firm Hayner Swanson, doing business at 3 Congress Street in Nashua, New Hampshire. With me tonight is the owner of the property, Tom Monahan, Gateway at Exeter LLC, and our project architect, Matt Worth from Procon, is also here. As just read into the record, this is a non-binding discussion of a design review for a proposed development. These meetings, Mr. Chairman, are beneficial for both parties. Early on, we get to introduce the project to you in a less formal sense, and we're able to have a good discussion about what you like, what you don't like, what the challenges are for us, and where we go from here. I'm probably going to spend about a quick 10-minute presentation, just kind of getting you situated, talking about the property, talking about the site, and that'll open up for any questions that any of us could answer. The site itself, I brought an aerial with me tonight, is a 60-acre site, and is formerly the King property, which is located off of Epping Road. This is exit nine, off of New Hampshire 101, and again, formerly the King property. On the property is actually two lots, as you read into the record. There's a very small, almost a third of an acre lot right here at the corner with a very small house. And then, the balance, making up the 60 acres, the main body of the property, is located in this unique geometric shape. The land, as you read, is located in the C3 Epping Road Highway Commercial District. Our immediate abutters are the highway to the north, town conservation land to the west. To the south, commercial uses off of Continental Boulevard, office condos, some businesses along Epping Road. This is Garrison Glen. You're looking at Cobham. You're looking at Webb. You're looking at Gourmet Gift Basket, and most recently, Unitil, which is currently under construction. Across Epping Road is, I think, the gas mini mart. I believe it's a mobile gas mini mart. The combined lots have about 600 feet of frontage on the property. We have surveyed a good portion of this property. We've surveyed the entire boundary. We brought with us the existing conditions plan. The property is currently wooded, but as you'll see from the prop, from the aerial, we believe it was forested in 2014, before Mr. Monahan had ownership of it. I'm sure many of you have been by the property, you see how flat it is in the front. It is a fairly flat property. We've walked the entire property. There is a very gentle grade from Epping Road, working in a westerly direction. Wetlands have been detailed and mapped, flagged and mapped on the site, on about the eastern 20 acres. That was done by Gove Environmental Services, Jim Gove and Brendan Quigley. And there is some historic 2015 mapping that was done for another survey on the back property. And you'll notice, if you look closely at this drawing, I mean, there is a smattering of wetland areas. There's combinations of small pockets located between the fingers of upland and ledge that exist on the site. There have been a number of flagged and mapped brunal pools, but they're mostly in the western part of the property, not in the eastern part of the property. As background, the property has seen several development schemes over the years. You'll probably be more familiar with some of those schemes than I am. Tom purchased the property in 2018. And, Mr. Chairman, you may recall, members of this team actually appeared before the planning board in a similar non-binding discussion about a year ago. And they presented a somewhat similar plan, but with a few differences. And we think those differences were in response to some of the comments that were received that evening, as we've tried to incorporate them into the new plan. One of the big changes was, the board wasn't keen on an assisting living component of the mixed-use project. There was questions about workforce housing and the need for workforce housing, and Mr. Monahan heard that. You may be aware that in May of 2019, the Exeter Zoning Board of Adjustment approved a variance upon this property to permit a multifamily residential complex as part of a mixed-use development. And that came with conditions. And I'll give you those conditions verbally. I'm sure there's a copy of the town record, but in a nutshell, the conditions were that the back land, the western part of the land, remain undeveloped, that 25% of the units of the workforce housing, as defined by New Hampshire state laws, so 25% of the units that we present before you this evening, will meet workforce housing rentals as defined by the law. The workforce housing is to remain in effect for 30 years. Units are to remain as rentals for 30 years, and there not be more than 224 units. And so, with that approval from the zoning board, I'd like to just present the concept. And I've got a smaller scale and a larger scale. So it's being proposed to develop the property by constructing a mixed-use project. I brought the smaller scale so you could see its relationship to the entire property. And then, I just blew it up into a larger, a larger scale for the drawing on the right. The notice of tonight did indicate that there will be a subdivision. Right now, there are two properties, as I mentioned. The intent is to end up with three properties, a slightly larger corner lot here on Epping, a bigger 12-acre lot here for the main body of the development, and then, the back land will be subdivided off, approximately a 44-acre parcel in the back. So I'll walk through quickly some of the components of the site plan. As you enter in off of Epping Road, and this driveway is located directly across from the driveway to the gas mini mart. On the left will be a commercial building, two-story building, 20,000 square feet down, 20,000 up. Right now, it is speculative in nature. Tom is actively in discussions with the YMCA for a daycare facility in that location. That would leave us another 20,000 feet. We have no tenants for that as of this evening. Could be a combination of retail, could be a combination of office, medical office, restaurant, anything that's allowed in the, in the C3 zoning district.
That's good.
And that's about a 2.5-acre property, and there's about 100, 110 parking spaces with it. And you'll see a second access located here at Epping in the back. The multifamily residential piece will exist on lot seven, 224 units, really in three buildings. I call it three, but it might technically be two. This L-shaped building is four stories in height, will contain 76 units, and you can see parking and green space surrounding that building. The building across, the private drive, these are private roads, is actually two four-story towers that have a very one-story connector. I call it a connector building. That is probably not the right architectural term, but it's clubhouse. Okay, so a clubhouse on the first floor will connect those two buildings. That clubhouse will contain a fitness area, a leasing area, some gathering spaces, a common room. Total parking for, for the multifamily is approximately 340 spaces. We have not finalized our parking schemes, Mr. Chairman. Your code allows a section under shared parking. We think this is a perfect opportunity to explore that, and the next time we appear before you, I'm sure we'll talk in greater detail about parking. But what we have here is the ingredients for kind of non-coincidental peaks for parking. In other words, the daycare might be busy during business hours, during morning hours, but most people may be at work, and so when they're busy, there'll be extra spaces on this side, and at night, there'll be extra spaces on this side. And of course, there'll be cross-parking and access and utility easements shared between both properties. Couple other quick elements. You know, obviously, stormwater is, is always a sensitive development issue, much like some of the other projects we've been fortunate to work on. We'll look at quality and quantity. Right now, it's looking like a series of smaller, low-impact design measures, some rain gardens and such, in the smaller areas, and then, we are proposing a larger stormwater basin in the back corner. As I showed you on the existing conditions, I know you didn't have time really to study the plan, but there is a number of wetlands in the front. The project does come with a sizable impact to the area, in excess of 2.9 acres. We have had discussions, initial discussions, with New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, with the Army Corps of Engineers, and with the EPA. In fact, we, we've had two meetings with them over the past year or so. They recognize kind of the nature and the quality of the wetlands, and, you know, it'll be up to us to prove the need to propose this type of development, and then, of course, come up with a mitigation effort that satisfies both the town and the state. Next up for us will be, of course, the Conservation Commission, and we'll be appearing before them and walking the site with the commission to get their input. Before I summarize, Mr. Chairman, Matt brought a perspective drawing I'll share with you. Talk a little bit about the, the architecture. I think the drawing last year that was represented had a more modern feel to it, and I think one of the comments was, "Let's go with some pitch roofs, and let's, let's go with a bit more of a traditional look." And so, Matt has tried to incorporate that into this, into this plan. We have a combination of varying exterior colors to the materials into the outside of the building, small Juliet-style decks on each, on each unit, not a full deck, but just a small space there where they could open their sliders and get some fresh air. This is the commercial building here. We're kind of looking at it, a bleak view, almost from 101A, looking down on the project. This would be a two-story building here. We can see a small amount of parking in the front of that particular building. And so, we'll talk more about architecture as the project progresses. We have a lot of work to do, Mr. Chairman. Our application to the town would likely include, as I mentioned, the subdivision plan, the site plan, our full application materials that the code requires. We anticipate a traffic study being submitted as part of the project. We anticipate a fiscal impact study being submitted as part of the project. And then, of course, we have our local and state permitting, and then, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, Conservation Commission. I made with me a little list of waivers that we might ask for. Again, the project is in its infancy. I know later on tonight, you have a discussion about the trees in excess of 16-inch diameter. We will inventory the trees within our work area. I'm not sure, we'll have that information, much like Unitil, we provided the information, we just didn't plot every tree on the property. I'm not sure where we'll, we'll head with that, but that's one possibility. Site-specific soils mapping in lieu of a HIS mapping is somewhat of a common waiver. Landscape islands, I suspect, given the amount of parking, we're talking over 400 spaces, we do have a number of interior islands, dog bones, and things like that. I don't think we completely comply with your regulation. If we don't, we may seek relief there, but again, I'm interested in your feedback here this evening. And so, those would be some of the waivers we might seek. So I'll summarize by saying, saying thank you for your time this evening. Again, this meeting is good for us to hear your concerns. Obviously, there's some challenges with, with the project that we fully anticipate working through and having the answers for you. I think when we come back in the future, we'll have better and more information on the commercial building in the front, parking information, the shared parking information, and of course, traffic. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. If I can, Tom or Matt would be happy as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Dave, if he has some comments first, before we proceed with our questions.
He covered it with the, you know, just my design review, non-binding. Just if you remember that, one, one comment in my memo, the property did receive designer review. You might be, you know, remembering this project, but that was for 120-unit assisted living facility with, you know, 20,000 square foot office building, 8,000 retail, 17,250 daycare facility with attached 24,000 office space. It's, it's a different, you know, similar kind of, you know, design, like in that area, the same piece of the parcel, but it's a different project. And then, in the event the board, as you say, you know, design review process has ended, I provided, you know, motions for your convenience. I mean, maybe what might be beneficial to them, if you've heard what, you know, studies that they're proposing, I know the TRC would be asking for a traffic, you know, impact analysis, so that's good to hear, but if the board, you know, might, you know, can anything, any other additional information they'd be asking for, that might be helpful to direct them, you know. I know it's non-binding, but if you're looking for some sort of, you know, study or assessment that you feel wasn't mentioned, that might be worth, you know, mentioning this evening.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody who'd like to start the discussion?
Just have a question.
Comments, yes.
The 2.98.
The 2.9 acres of wetlands, where on the map? Can you just, what area of the map is that in?
You can take the mic with you.
Yeah, so it's probably difficult to see.
Okay.
You know, we've got a 60-acre site that, if you look closely at this drawing, as I mentioned in my presentation, there is just a number of little fingers and pockets of wetland soil, poorly drained soil throughout the entire 60 acres. And that type of pattern of pocketed wetlands really runs consistently throughout the site. So as we develop our site here, I can tell you that, that there's an impact through this portion of the site, and there's a fairly large impact through this portion of the site. And so, you know, we're looking at probably about 15 acres here, so roughly 20% of that site is poorly drained soils.
And then the, the third lot, the 44, 45 acres that...
In the back, yes.
Right, that, that it was a condition for that to remain under, undeveloped? Is that a condition that is tied to the property or the lot forever indefinitely, or just to your development, or?
It's tied to the proposal for a multifamily mixed-use development, correct.
Okay.
In other words, if we came in tomorrow with, you know, a medical office building, we're really starting from scratch. But if we pursue this, that is a condition of that approval, that's correct.
Okay. And then if you proceeded with that, with that condition, then would it be, that lot would just be, remain undeveloped?
Yes.
Even if it's sold or whatever?
Yes.
Okay.
I would think that during that subdivision, the planning board would follow up on that condition and make sure that's noted in the plans and recorded, you know, via something, you know, something recorded to that effect.
Do I see, pardon me, do I see two cuts on to 27?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and one of them is for the commercial building, or, and the other is going to serve, or I guess, are they going to be connected such that you can go out either way?
Yeah. If I may, sir, let me talk a little bit about that. One of the tenants that I mentioned in the presentation is a YMCA daycare. And while I don't know all the specific details, what we anticipate is that parents would drive their child in through the main entrance, circle back, plenty of opportunity here to park their vehicle, walk their child in, and then they would be able to leave here. And there's also an after-school program where a bus, one bus a day, would enter the site, maneuver through, drop off, you know, the number of children who are, who are going to be cared for here, and then exit the site in that location. So we actually like that. We like the second, the second access into a project like this, yeah. And there's two curbs there now for this property.
I was just going to say that, the lower driveway, the driveway near Exeter, that's probably pretty close to an existing driveway. So you've got a cut in that curve there.
Yes, sir.
Well, that's what I was going to then give, because I think whatever traffic survey is, just can't be for this piece of property. We have to consider the impact of those who are going to be coming from the other development, which, I mean, I'm going to assume that when your traffic study comes, that it will, excuse me, that was a frog that I picked up somewhere, it will take into consideration what's occurring across the street as well as this?
Typically, they do, sir, yeah. They will, they will reach out to Dave and say, "Hey, what's planned or what's going on in the study area?" And they'll take that into consideration.
It's right by the exit, so there's traffic coming off 101.
I think on this, this size, you'd probably include the interchanges at 101, you probably, you know, to, you know, Continental Drive intersection.
And then everybody who's going to be coming in from that other, the, yeah, I mean, in that area, basically, from the Continental Drive intersection to the interchange. But also, this is right next to, this is right, like, the, not, not, it's right on the DOT.
The urban compact area is right by Cronin Road, right there. So anything north of that, it's DOT jurisdiction. And we had met on this, on the scoping project, not on this particular development, but the whole Continental, because we were talking to DOT of, of looking at the 101 exchange, particularly the westbound off-ramp intersection. And, you know, and they, they were like, as development comes, they want to be part of the conversation, even, you know, if they don't have jurisdiction. So we'll run it by them about their, you know, the scope of their intersections, because we've been trying to look at them to get, get them to do something with their road and maybe make improvements to that intersection. The state on, on board with it, so we're working with them about that.
Because I have to say, this jumps out at me.
Yeah. Okay. It'll be an impact.
Well, it'll be an impact, but I just wanted to be sure they were going to address both sides of 27.
Yes, sir.
Questions or thoughts?
Well, I'm just thinking about the difference between 224 residential units versus 120-unit assisted living, and then commercial stuff. It's a, that's probably a lot more people with cars, right? And which is kind of, I mean, goes into what you were talking about. But I guess that's, that's part of the study.
Have you an idea of the general or summary of what's going to be available for apartments in those? I thought, I heard you say apartments. Are they all going to be apartments? Are there going to be condos? Or don't we know yet?
Well, per the zoning, it cannot be a condo for 30 years, so it's apartments.
Yes, it can be apartments.
158 essentially one-bedroom and studio units.
Okay.
And 68 two-bedrooms. So it's a, it's interesting to see how the market goes. 25 years ago, it would have been just the opposite. There would have been more twos and less ones. And Tom had a market study done, and the one-bedrooms are their age, so it's 156 to 68 on the ones and twos. I did forget to mention, we are providing some parking back here at the back of the project, the little footbridge, to gain access to that backland before I forget.
So that parking?
For the residents, for the residents and the public, yeah.
Okay. That's, that was going to be a good question.
I, in terms of the parking, I mean, to me, that seems like not enough parking, because that assumes that most of these apartments are going to be one-car. The shared parking, I really, I think that's a really interesting model, and I actually work up in Newmarket where the, the Newmarket Mill Building is, you know, kind of mixed use, and there's a parking lot that's basically shared parking. So I drive into work in the morning at 8:15, and people who live there are leaving, and it's kind of a great, like, changeover of parking spaces. And so that parking lot is never empty, which actually becomes a little bit of a problem in the winter, because it's never empty and you can't plow it, but, but the mix there is, it seems more commercial than this. Like, this seems like it would be, it's, it's very heavy in the residential, the daycare is probably going to be open early. I, I just don't see the shared-use parking working here with this, with this mix. So I guess that's something that, that I would like to see a little bit more about how you think that's going to work. It just seems to me like a lot of apartments for, for not enough parking spaces.
I, I'll be truthful, I initially thought the same thing, but when I came to understand the one-bedroom mix versus the two-bedroom mix, I think it kind of weighed into, okay, you know, this, you know, this could work. I mentioned 340 spaces, kind of in direct, you know, relocation to these apartments. The doors are located here and here and here, and there's a door here. That's about a 1.55 ratio, which, you know, the sweet spot is 175, and so for multis, but I think that's where the higher two-bedroom count, so.
So, so does that 340 include the commercial spots, or is that, oh, that's not the total?
No, there's another, there's another 110 here.
Oh, okay, so the total is 450.
Yeah, around 450, yeah.
Okay, all right, I thought that was all, the whole shared number, okay. Thank you for clarifying.
So you bring up an interesting thing, though. It's going to be a challenge upon us to kind of find that sweet spot with the shared concept, with, you know, the bedroom counts, with the uses, with the interior landscape islands, with all that good stuff about parking, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, I guess I just want to emphasize the gravity of a 2.9-acre wetland fill. I mean, I don't know if Exeter's seen that kind of impact to wetlands. I can't think of any impact to wetlands that big that's not, you know, on the state scale, that's not either a DOT project or an airport project. I, I don't, so, I mean, I'd be interested in your conversations with the Wetlands Bureau, Army Corps, EPA, because that seems like a really big hurdle, both locally, but also at the state scale.
Sure. Yep, good point. You know, the Walmart, you know, in Epping comes to mind, where I think they were, I think in excess of five acres of fill for that project, but different animal, big box, and, you know, that was permitted some time ago. But your point is well-taken. And sir, frankly, we knew that from day one. That's why we took, in fact, I think the first meeting was in 2017 with DES and the Corps, and then we followed it up with a site walk. So we understand the, the site, yeah, we understand the size of it, sure.
And then one other thing I'd like to raise, and maybe I'll just point this out on the map here, if I can take this, is that, you know, we all know Epping Road, and that it's, it's completely developed. This is kind of the last remaining wildlife connection between the town forest and Exeter and the wildlife management area. So if we're concerned about wildlife connectivity, there's almost nothing to the south of here. It's, it's, it's kind of this connection right between the house that's part of this project and the mobile station. So for me, that's, that's also a pretty significant issue, so just raising that. I don't know if you've considered wildlife connectivity, especially in east-west direction, but that, that's something to consider as well.
Thank you.
That's a good point.
I think, you know, in relation to that, I was just thinking, in the 2.9 acres, I think this would be a case, you know, Dave said to mention studies that we'd probably want to look at. I think this would be a case that we'd probably want to see, or I would want to see at least, an environmental impact assessment, and, and, you know, really where the wildlife corridors are and what else are we missing.
I'd probably want to chat with Dave about kind of the scope of that.
Of course, and that was, I mean, that's just coming from me, and it's obviously not coming from the whole world.
I think that's a fair request.
Just given what the two of you have just said, I'm just curious about maybe part of the thought process that went into four stories versus, you know, if there's five stories, is there a smaller footprint? Or are there other considerations that you've already, you know, mulled about for days that I'm not thinking about?
Yeah, your zoning, you know, has a height limitation of 50 feet, so.
Okay, okay, it's the 50 feet.
Four works, five probably doesn't.
Okay.
So I guess I'll just mention one more thing related to a natural resource survey inventory. You had mentioned vernal pools, but I, to make sure that there's a full assessment, springtime assessment of vernal pools on the site, if it hasn't been.
They were done in the spring, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and several, in several years. You know, our consultant is GOV Environmental, they're right next door. They've looked at this site a number of years for a number of different projects. The mapping, sir, for the project up front is recent, it was done in 2017, so they've got good intel on the project, yeah. Great, thank you.
I would say, in looking at the pitaral of the buildings, there's some nice green space between those and the highway. And my question, is that intended to remain that way, or is that for future elbow room, or?
We think this is it, Mr. Chairman, yeah. You know, we have...
Pretty major impact on the property itself, so.
Yeah, yes.
That helps us soften it?
Yeah, we have this kind of open water area here that, that we thought was, was worth respecting and keeping, and that really forms kind of this front area that serves as a nice buffer to Epping Road coming off the highway.
Exactly, yep, yep.
I would like to just make a comment that, remembering the plan from last year that was presented, one of the, the things that stuck out at me was the, that there was parking right along Epping Road, there was like a parking lot and then a building behind it, and I really appreciate that. It looks like that's been flipped where the building is now. The parking is mostly on the sides and the back, so I just wanted to, to point out that that was, that's kind of a welcome change from the original plan.
Well, thank you.
Well, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak? Please step up and introduce yourselves, so our viewers at home know who's here.
Tom Monahan, the owner of the property. And what Jim didn't mention is, I also own the balance of Garrison Glen. We own, we, I own the gourmet gift basket building. We just sold the, the land to Unitil. I didn't want to sell it, but I thought Unitil's really good for the community, so we, we sold it to Unitil. But, you know, so this, the two lots I have remaining back at Garrison Glen is about 50 acres, and it provides an access to the conservation land out back. And one of the things that we really want to pay attention to, and that's why we've sort of consolidated into 15 or 16 or whatever it is acres up front, is because we do want to retain the backland. It does have vernal pools. It's a difficult, developable site, but what we want to do, one way or another, is to provide access to the conservation land, another access to the conservation land. You know, and we were thinking about the human being, I, I heard you, and, yeah, we also have to get, you know, others than human beings out, get them to travel. So we heard you, and it's important for us, and, and it's important for you folks to realize that we, we have no intention of developing the back 45 acres. We, in fact, are the ones who, who submitted that to the zoning board. They didn't impose it. We actually said that this is what we wanted to do. It's important to me, it's important to the, hopefully, the development that's going to go out back on the 50 acres, that we have access to the conservation land out back as well as this site, and giving the opportunity for wildlife to get out back as well and come the other way. So, yeah, that, that, we heard you. Thank you.
Thank you.
It does look that, like, at least what I'm seeing here, there is a footbridge getting back to that backland, and I'm going to assume...
We're proposing that, sir.
Yeah, you're proposing it, I'm just noting.
Boy Scout, Boy Scout project or some sort of...
Will they serve water?
But that area there, you know, can support parking, there's a little concrete pad there if somebody wants to, you know, get their bikes and get, and head back and head west. And I think Tom's point is, and I should have brought this, but, you know, that backland does connect to that 212 acres that the town owns surrounding Garrison Glen. And so there is good connectivity with the thinking here.
Are there any known trails, foot trails or pathways out in that particular junk? I mean, some parts of town, you've got to watch out in the middle of woods, the bicycles will come tearing down through.
Not yet, not, not yet.
Not yet, okay. That's unique.
Well, that's actually good, better for the wildlife habitat you were talking about anyways, maybe that we don't have to have trails on every piece of land we don't develop.
Well, as you pointed out, it's fairly, relatively level, soggy in spots.
It's not super steep, but there's, there's a little bit of moonscape there, a little bit up and down, and that's why in the low areas, we're finding all these, these kind of wetish, poorly drained soil areas.
Yeah. You're pretty quiet tonight.
Yeah, it's not really.
Be happy or unhappy, I don't know which.
It's what it is.
Any other concerns or requests that the board may have? Are you getting what you need? Are you getting what you need?
Yes, thank you.
We don't want to, we appreciate you coming in, so we want to make sure you go happy, go home happy. Because we know how valuable these sessions are.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
And I think it might be a question for Dave, about the applicant mentioned mitigation for the wetland, and I'm just thinking ahead, you know, if this went forward, that negotiation of the mitigation is something that happens between you and the state, or between the applicant and the state, I mean, the town doesn't really have any say in that, do we?
Yeah, any wetlands permit that gets filed, also gets filed with the town clerk, and it goes to the Conservation Commission. And then they go before the Conservation Commission, who writes comments to the state. So that's, you know, that's who's involved. The town, the Conservation Commission does definitely have a say in it, and can write written comments on the application and forward it to the state for their consideration.
But I guess my question is, when it comes to like the mitigation, so like the applicant actually paying money to a, to some kind of-
The arm fund.
Bank, or, yeah, to like the arm fund or setting or purchasing conservation land or whatever. My understanding is, because the applicant kind of stated that it's something that could benefit the state and the town, and in my experience, it's something that the town kind of has almost, I mean, is there any opportunity for us to have a say in what that mitigation is, and if it is something that could benefit the town, or is it, you know, if it goes in the arm fund, it could be used somewhere in, you know, Coos County or something?
Yeah, I mean, I think anything's fair game with the Conservation Commission to-
So they can request that the-
Yeah, I mean, it's an application before them, I mean, Pete knows about this, maybe better than I do, maybe he can answer that. But I've been involved in a few of those with a golf course and so forth, and the town was very much involved.
Oh, okay.
And talking with the state, more at the staff level, a lot at the staff level, about what, you know, mitigation and so forth. So, I think we'll be involved, the Conservation Commission, I don't think anything bars them from making, you know, comments on that.
Oh, great, okay.
Regarding that, so, I mean, at the end of the day, it is, you're right, it is state rules. You know, there's like a 15 to one mitigation for, you know, land wise, like land mass, I think it's 15 to one probably on this one.
I'd have to check, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's like, you know, 15 to one, so every acre fills, you know, you can mitigate with. But then, they're also, I know that the push has been, especially with the arm funds, is to try to keep the funds in the watershed where the impact occurred. You know, that may not have always been the case in the past, like-
Yeah, okay.
You know, and they've been, you know, kind of, and they're like, well, wait a minute, we're protecting all this forest up north, but we're filling all these wetlands down south there, you know, so try to, you know, kind of get a good space there, you know, and relationship between, you know, the impacts and the region that is, you know, that gets the mitigation or gets some benefit from it.
Okay.
So, they've been pretty good about that. That's been a focus lately. I'm not saying it's guaranteed, but that's definitely been a focus.
Great, okay, thank you.
But I'll follow up, make sure we keep in-
I can speak to it a little bit, that, you know, any arm funds that go into the pot in the Salmon Falls Piscataqua watershed stays in this watershed, but that's a, it goes all the way up to Alton, and all the way, you know, down, out, almost out to Salem, so. But the wetland mitigation program, I think, is really encouraging towns to develop mitigation lists, you know, like what are their priority lists, so that if there is a payment that comes into the arm program, that the town has this list, and instead of going into the pot, that they can direct it to town priorities, because that's the ideal situation to mitigate as close to the impact as possible, and not, you know, again, if the impact's down here and we're doing a mitigation project out in Rye or something, where that's in a completely different catchment, so.
Okay.
So I think it's, but I think it's probably up to the Conservation Commission to have developed that list.
Which, of course, makes sense.
And maybe, I can ask the applicant, I mean, are you thinking that, you know, are you at that stage yet where it's a, you know, you're looking at it in lieu fee, or you're looking at this 45 acres of backland to be used for the mitigation? Because if it is, then that's, you know, that's inexor-
We're just getting started.
Okay.
I suspect by the time we're here again, we're close to an answer.
Okay. Good.
So if that land meets the criteria, they could possibly use that as mitigation to offset the impact on the other piece? Or at least a portion of it, or all of it, and then something else, or however the state-
Right.
Yeah, I would say to that, that the EPA in particular is going to be very resistant to putting a highly undevelopable property, taking that and using it as mitigation, because they're saying, what's the threat?
There's no, yeah, there's no risk.
There's no threat to it, it's not developable, from their standpoint. So, just a little context.
Nick, do you have anything? No? Just want to make sure you're not overtaken or taken over by this, too. Nope, nope. Okay, good.
Do we have the ZBA decision? Yeah. Yeah, I mean, when formal application comes in, it's something that I would always include in your packets.
Yep.
It is noted right on the plan, the, I know you probably got a small plan. It's right in the notes, under the bullets.
Yes.
Bullets under note number two are the conditions of the ZBA. But you'd probably need a magnifying glass to read it.
Oh, yeah.
We will get you that decision letter-
Thank you.
During formal submission.
Yep.
I always, you know, any ZBA decisions, when a formal application's submitted, I always- Okay, I thought you did. Yeah. I just wanted to be sure.
But I would also say, I appreciate the concern for the workforce housing. And the housing is just something that we need, and the workforce will help with those folks. Quick sidebar, on the study we're dealing with homes, the results, it'd be interesting for you to look at, of the diversity that Exeter has, is one of the best diversified towns in the state. So, and that certainly is available online, I'm sure, if it's, very interesting information about this town. So, have we, you're comfortable with what we've given you?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Okay. Is the board comfortable with our discussion? If so, I'd say maybe we can have a motion to-
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I move that the design review process for Gateway at Exeter LLC PB Case Number 19-12 has concluded, and instruct the town planner to notify the applicant in writing in accordance with NHRS A676:4.
Second.
Moved and seconded it. Any discussion? Let's do a hand vote. For those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Okay, opposed, abstentions, it's unanimous vote. Thank you very much for your time.
Have a nice evening, thank you.
Appreciate the illustrations. And we wish you good luck on your challenges. Put it on, all up on piling, it should be all set. All right.
And put a, an animal thing under the road.
Right.
So they can tear up all the water soon, I think, when they put in.
Oh, let's see.
Thank you. Okay, where's our next?
Okay, we now have a public hearing on our site and subregs amendment section 7.4.7, significant trees. And Dave, would you like to start us off on this?
Yeah, I'll just go back and quickly give some background. As you know, there has been discussion by the board requiring the requirement in the section 7.47 of the site plan regulations, for the existing conditions plan to identify significant trees, which are defined as 16 inches diameter or greater, measured 12 inches above the ground. This discussion revolved around the fact that waivers from this provision have been routinely granted, and the board had questioned that this provision should remain in the regulations. The master plan oversight committee did discuss this provision, and then they suggested it should be discussed by the full board. The board did discuss the issue at its June 13th meeting, and then subsequently voted at the June 27th meeting to create a subcommittee for further review of the provision. The subcommittee met on September 9th, and presented their report on the board at their September 12th meeting, at which time the board voted to hold a public hearing on the proposed revisions as proposed by the subcommittee. And the subcommittee has proposed the following amendment to section 7.4.7, and I'll read what they, how they want it to read now. Natural features including watercourses and water bodies, tree lines, significant trees, 20 inches or greater in diameter at breast height, other significant vegetative cover, topographic features, and any other environmental features that are important to the site design process. That is the new language. The only language that was changed was 16 inches was crossed out, and 20 inches was added at breast height. Instead of 16 inches measuring it 12 inches off the foot off the ground, it's easier and more common to measure a tree at breast height. But also, they added the last sentence too, that the identification of significant trees as defined above shall be limited to the areas proposed for disturbance. Significant trees proposed for removal shall be labeled as such on the existing conditions plan, and significant trees to remain shall be identified on the site or subdivision plan. They added that last sentence because, A, they wanted to limit it to just the area that was being disturbed, so you have a site, maybe this design review site that's 63 acres, they're gonna, you know, 45 acres will remain undeveloped, but our regulations don't, you know, acknowledge that, so you technically, to meet the regulations, you'd have to do the whole 63 acre site. So this would limit that just to the areas of disturbance, but it would also require any significant trees that are proposed for removal would be identified as such on the existing conditions plan, and any that would remain would be on the site sub, so you get a sense of what, how many of those trees actually are being removed and/or being saved, if you will, or will remain unharmed. So that is what's before you tonight. It's a public hearing, I don't see anyone, but you can go through the motions of asking anyone here, and I provided a motion for your benefit if you so move in the direction of adopting this. And it'll become effective, you know, immediately upon such vote.
Okay. We have discussed this at some point, but is there some more discussion, or are there any other questions, concerns?
No, I think it's much more clear, and it would make, I would, you'd have to have a pretty darn good reason to get a waiver now, whereas before, it was, you know, was not so.
Yep.
Well, before, you still needed a darn good reason to pick up a waiver, but-
Right, right, but the things like-
We were giving them.
Right, but the things that we talked about with like the 45 acres you're not going to develop and having to survey it anyway is a lot of, is a burden on people. But now, I mean, you, okay, you'd have to have a really darn, 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 darn good reason, I think, now.
No, I just said I-
Right.
Anything else?
You ready to make a motion? I think we beat this one to death.
Yep.
Okay, go.
Yep.
It's a long motion. I don't know if I can read that much tonight.
Well, excuse me, let me go with this public first.
I can move it if you want.
You got it?
I'll move it.
So if there's anyone in the public that would like to come up and speak to this particular proposal-
He needs a caffeine.
All right. For change, please do so, speak to the microphone and introduce yourself for the record.
Public, yeah.
Yes, public, I'm-
Look at them all.
They're not rushing up there, are they? Okay, I'll close it, bring it back to the board so we can move ahead. Now I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to amend section 7.4.7 of the site plan and subdivision regulations by deleting, quote, "16 inches in diameter, caliper, or greater measured 12 inches above the ground," end quote, and replacing with, quote, "20 inches or greater in diameter at breast height," end quote, and adding the following at the end of the section, quote, "The identification of significant trees as defined above shall be limited to the areas proposed for disturbance. Significant trees proposed for removal shall be labeled as such on the existing conditions plan, and significant trees to remain shall be identified on the site or subdivision plan," end quote.
I'll stay with it.
Okay. I was going to go, yeah.
Got three seconds.
Second, third, and a fourth.
Right.
Dan can figure it out.
Oh, any more discussion then? I would call for a, let's do a hand vote on this, so there's no questions to what the board's action is. So those in favor, please raise your right hands. Those opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, unanimous vote, and thank you.
Good work.
Good work on that.
The committee is continuing its work, but thank you.
We've got to remember the composition of that committee when we want things done.
Oh, that committee's still composed.
Yeah, we're meeting again in a couple weeks.
They haven't been dismissed yet.
No, they asked to, they asked to continue if you read the minutes.
I'm going to disregard that.
You're reading the minutes too hard, in between the spelling, instead of with the contents. Okay, our next business tonight is the XL Construction Freedom Tree, excuse me, Friedman Realty Trust, planning case number 18, planning board case number 18-07, request for extension of conditional approval, which expires on 10/25/19, for the 173 to 179 Water Street project. And we have a letter from Mr. Friedman with attachments of the letter that, of our approval. No, excuse me, I've got another case mixed up.
You do have a letter dated May 15th?
Yes, we do, okay.
May 15th?
Oh.
No.
No, that's what it says.
October-
October 29th.
October-
Well, the cover one says May 15th, yeah.
Yeah, his letter.
Probably not right.
Yes.
Oh, that's his letter.
Right.
Yeah, the October 29th is the approval letter.
Right.
But his letter is-
Yeah, it seems weird.
His letter is dated May 15th, so he was thinking ahead.
Which is interesting. Is this in the files for a while? Anyway.
Yeah.
Oops, better send that one.
This is the first one, this is the first extension, because it was approved a year ago, a little less than a year ago. And if you make a motion to approve, it would expire on, your extension would expire on 10/25/2020.
Is, chair's open to a motion, since you want to discuss this?
I just have a question, is this, I'm trying to remember what project this is, is it the one with the parking?
Under.
The under parking?
That you go around through the boat launch, boat parking lot?
Yes, okay.
Yeah. That's it.
Well, that was a year.
I'm sorry, we, no. What is that next to? I'm trying to-
Well, if you walk by it, it says-
It's George and Phillips, you know George and Phillips? It's that building.
Okay, okay.
It was basically out, you know, behind that building, taking out the back and going up in the back.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. And adding units.
Where the parking lot already-
And converting to apartments.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Well, still this is up front apartments and back, and overhead.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, just a question, since I'm new to these, how, is there a standard protocol for you extend it for a year, but not again? I mean, I guess thinking about what if there are newer butters who had no idea about this project, and, you know, might have, how far do we go, you know, is it-
We don't go forever. What is it, two, Dave, two or three times?
Yeah, I mean, the first one, I mean, unless there's a, you know, a reason, usually the first, I've never been around where you've denied the first one.
Yeah, first one's no problem.
The one-year extension.
Got to get financing together, everything else is on-
There is something in there, but I've seen, you know, you grant several in a row, I guess a lot of it depends on if the regulations after a couple years, if the regulations have changed, like our storm water regs, we changed our storm water regs, that was under the old one. Okay, you're asking for your third or fourth extension, and you got approved under the old regs, well, that's a good reason to say now, you know, you need to come back because our regulations have changed. But sometimes the case don't go- I always tell, when it's two or three years, I say, you know, if, what if any of our regulations change? If they haven't changed, maybe you do, maybe you don't. But that answers it, you know, I think it's a case-by-case basis on some, but the first one has always been-
Well, we did one, did one a lot-
But legally, we have the, it's our discretion.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. He was asking customarily.
I understand, but we have the authority-
Correct.
Without a newer butter, without changes in regulations, to say-
Correct.
You had a year. You didn't do it.
Yep.
You got to start over. We can do that. I don't think we have, since I've been aware, but we can, so.
And I'm not advocating for that in this case, but I guess at some point-
It's thirty, yeah.
When it's been long enough and the new neighbors have bought- When it's been long enough and the new neighbors have bought their new place, thinking it was one thing, and all of a sudden it changes into something else that it, I, I don't know, just something to keep in mind.
Well, one we did not too long ago was on the proposed cell tower out by the town sheds. And we, we gave some, we said, this is the last time, and be sure if you have to come in and, I mean, nobody showed up, they just sent it in on paper, this is typical anyway. So, they, they've been notified in that case, yeah. Okay.
I would say, I just want to say on that, Peter, one thing that I found is that usually those tend to be granted more easily in a recession, more economic driven.
Okay.
Whereas in this kind of a marketplace where business is generally pretty good, um, usually people move forward with projects, or they get abandoned, frankly, you know?
Yeah.
That's been my experience.
And sometimes, say, projects go through a natural death, like they went out by McDonald's, twice. And then somebody came and cut the trees.
Is there any, because, because state laws, remember I came here and you didn't define active and substantial development? And if you don't, that's a whole different story, and almost like, you, you know, you're, you're exempt for, for any future changes in regulations for five years unless you define active and substantial development. So there might be still some products that are left under that.
Yeah.
That timeline, so those are a little different.
Sure.
But this isn't, neither of these are one of those.
Right.
Because they have kind of vested rights, which, even if they didn't start active and substantial development in a building.
So, Chair, are we willing to accept a motion to approve? If somebody cares to move.
There may be wording on it.
Well, if we, I'll move it. That we accept the, um, I guess it's the request.
Yep.
For a, um, one-year extension to the, for the project, uh, what number is that?
Eighteen oh seven.
Eighteen oh seven, until?
Ten twenty-five twenty.
Ten twenty-five twenty.
Two thousand twenty.
Yep.
A second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Uh, voice votes, fine. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, tensions, the ayes have it, thank you. Next, we have Porters at Exeter.
Same thing, request for a one-year extension on the town approvals. This was granted a year ago. You may have remembered that it was granted prior, but then they, then they had to redesign, come back, and got a new approval, offer a different design, and that was last year, and this is their first extension request for this, and she does uh, state in her letter that she plans to start construction next spring, and the reason for the delay is simply that my focus has been on building and opening the Bungalow Club. This is the vacant lot, uh, that's down, it's, it's across Riverside, it's not on the river on Franklin Street, it's right on the corner of Franklin and South Street.
Yep.
Do we need to discuss it, or?
Any discussion, any questions?
Do it.
I, I would move that we grant the one-year extension in case eighteen-ten until?
Ten twenty-five twenty.
Ten twenty-five twenty.
Second.
I'll second it.
Moving and seconded. Discussion? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, tensions, the ayes have it, unanimous vote. Master plan discussion is the next item.
I can just quickly say, I mean, last, we've been, we're still working on the form-based code discussion, still discussing the form-based code, um, in town, and looking to marry it with the municipal technical assistance grant in a way, so that process that I updated you last meeting continues, that kind of same talk. Anyone else in the committee has anything to add, but that's all I have.
And we're due to meet in another couple of weeks.
Yep, we're due to meet in another couple of weeks, yeah.
Okay.
How did the open house go?
Oh.
I wasn't able to go, but.
Yeah, I mean, it didn't get the turnout, I mean, I wish I, in hindsight, maybe I, you know, I don't know, I got to keep thinking of new ways to market. Uh, but I talked to a few people, other people that had public hearings on different things, and it hasn't been great turnout lately, maybe it's the season, I don't know. Um, but we, we had some, we had probably, um, I, I wasn't there the whole time, you know, I was in my office, but I came out, I saw, you know, several people, you know, kind of one or two people at a time, you know, coming in, talking to, talking to Nate Kelly from Horsley Witten Group, uh, and then the night time, we probably got, you know, maybe twelve, fifteen folks.
Yeah.
Um, come to the presentation, but we did, you know, record it, it's being played on the TV, so hopefully it'll get, uh, a little more exposure. We got some, you know, good feedback from the folks that, that did attend and did show up and discuss, so, yes.
It was a good presentation, so that.
Yeah, it was a very good presentation, yeah.
Nate did a very good job.
Yeah, if you haven't watched it, you know, you can either watch it, you know, if it comes online, or you can just go right onto our website, and I believe you should be able to pull it up on demand.
Mm-hmm.
And the results, I would say the results on the survey, I found to be very interesting, and well-presented. You know, simple, and you can look at it, so that's, that's why they had the four big panels on these tables, and with, uh, stinking notes so you could write some comments, put it on if you want, so it was presented very nicely.
And the next steps, I told him, uh, talked to Nate, uh, the next, the next day, and he hopefully has, hopefully, uh, he committed to having a draft, uh, regulation, proposed amendment by us by the end of the month. So, I'll get that to you as soon as I get it, so you should be getting within three or four weeks, you should be sending that, and that'll give us time to review it during November, potentially hold a public hearing if the board decides to have a public hearing, and then, then you could vote to put it on, you know, two thousand and twenty, uh, March warrant, if you chose to do so. So, we're still on target for, that was been the bud, uh, the schedule the whole time, and we are still on that schedule.
Okay. Town planner items, chair is yours.
I don't have any field modifications, but I don't know if it's announcement, but I have a request.
Okay.
Because Kristen, Kristen came to me and, um, asked about this, because if you remember last year in our shoreline and our aquifer protection district, we modified, uh, the fertilizer requirements, because fertilizer were outright prohibited, and there were, particularly PEA kept coming in with a management plan every year, and we kept waiving, and was it like, okay, so maybe we can allow some organics and so forth, and different types of fertilizer, um, and maybe a higher application for heavy-use turf? And the board ended up, the con, yeah, well, I don't know, it's conservation, they had a clean water, healthy lawn committee that worked on it with Kristen, they had a soil scientist, so.
Yep.
They moved it ahead, and it got approved by the voters last year. And the language was such that upon, uh, heavy-use, uh, fertilizer restrictions may be waived by the planning board or their designee for circumstances indicated, providing the following conditions are met. It talks about heavy, uh, used turf fields upon the submission of a turf management plan, adhering to all of the criteria above, or restoration or establish of new landscaping, um, maybe with, you know, maybe waived with submission of written justification addressing the need and the specific locations within the property, and it can only, it can't exceed more than one year. The question was, is we put that in their planning board or their designee, is that something you wanted to designate? We don't have anything pending now, nothing got submitted, but someone was talking to them, uh, Swayze trustees were looking to potentially apply some sort of new landscaping, maybe in the sewer easement or something like that, some, you know, some, some fertilizer uh, in the aquifer, or not the aquifer, that's shoreline down there. So, we were wondering what the process would be, because we, we adopted it with the, you know, with that language in there, if the planning board wanted to designate, um, but we never circled back to, I mean, it wouldn't be until the spring, but would you want to see those, or would you want to designate? So, maybe, I don't need an answer right now, but, you know, maybe I'll just plant the seed, think about it, and then I'll circle back at the next meeting, if it's something you wanted to, uh, designate staff like myself and/or Kristen, um, to do these. We, we'd be happy to, if not, you know, then just come to the planning board for those. I mean, we've never had one since March, so it's not like there's going to be a lot of them.
My, my quick thinking is that if we have a designated, we probably would like to have a report of such action being taken for so-and-so, just so we're informed, that's all.
Yeah, that's why it would be, you know, like, that's, you know, field modifications, that's why I put, because you, you know, you designated in our site plan subdirection that I approved field modifications, and every time someone comes up, I always report to you, explain it, so that would be the same for these.
It seems, maybe the standards are pretty clearly set out there, it's not a matter of good judgment or bad judgment, it's that, that standards are set.
Yeah. And, and note that if anything, it, it says or their designee, so if something came to us, like myself and Kristen, and we conversed, and we thought, like, you know, I don't know, we would kick it to you, like, you know, the planning board, I mean, we, you know, we wouldn't, you know, it's like, anything like that, we, we're always free in that situation to say, wow, this is kind of, you know, that might, you know, people might be concerned, there might be a concern about this, or something like that, we'd automatically, you know, we'd, we'd say, you know, go to the planning board instead, so. It wouldn't eliminate the planning board process, it could, but it not necessarily.
I could see sometimes the parties involved might be wiser that the board make the decision.
Especially if it's the first time for a particular property? Because this is for one year?
Yeah.
But if it's a recurring thing that we vetted several times, and that seems easier to delegate than something that's the first time coming before the board?
Yeah, I mean, if, if you decide to designate, you could, you could make that, like, you know, any new applications come to the board, and we would just, you know, that would be the policy, and we would follow that, and then if PEA came in with their turf management plan like they do every year, uh, you know, that's something that we could, you know, we, we can approve.
Yeah.
I'll just bring it up next time, and.
Okay.
We'll, you know, have time to think about it, whatever. There's no rush. And.
Anything else?
That's all I have this evening, thank you.
Let's see, chairperson's items, uh, we're still trying to get somebody to be on the which committee with Nick was on.
Heritage, was it Heritage being it?
The Heri, yeah.
No, it's the. Historic District.
Historic District. Okay, so.
Who's not here tonight?
Wow.
John.
John, John is very qualified.
He didn't say it, he didn't say that.
See?
Yeah.
The ones with nothing in their body.
Kelly's going to have a lot of titles if she.
Oh, she is, huh, okay, well, if we don't see her.
Kelly was on it. She's been on the HDC, I think you've been on it. I thought Kelly was too, for a while.
I think she was.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think she was the one before Nick. Actually. Looks like a John Gruder. I nominate John Gruder.
All in favor?
Okay, I'm.
Brings both hands.
We'll know if you watched a minute, right?
I'm telling them we did a survey at the board. I'll see if I can get him to sign up there. Yep. All right.
Are you looking for a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir. Unless there's any representatives to report on other committee activity.
To put in minutes.